Have a sunshiny, pretty day, so I enjoyed the, I enjoyed the drive over. Superintendent, if I remember right, leadership government governance today, we didn't have anything we was going to add there, was going to go straight to committee reports, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, committee reports, anything happening on your committees that you want to report, board members, whoever wants, whoever wants to fire off?
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, so we do, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Robin, do you want to go next?
Sure. Let's see, foundations, I just want to point out that at the state of the district, that they honored Kathleen McCackney after 30 years of, she's really been the, 30 years of service, being the one behind that, and so I thought that was great, I would.
And who honored her, Robin?
Actually, the foundations themselves, but it would be nice if maybe we recognized her as well, because she's put in so much time and energy, so, and I think Vernie Heaney's going to be here to tell you about Story, the Storytelling Festival, and then in April, just get it on your radar, it's the, Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?, so this is just informational, calendary stuff, and, you be taking, I don't really have anything to report there, just attending those meetings, and it's great, great people. And then, I do have some stuff for our policy, I've got, I got, I did get feedback today, and I called Tanya a little bit, but we'll talk about it when it comes up, and, oh, I do want to share one thing, one more thing, sorry. Okay, so, just want to report this, I just, it's, I don't know if it's a fun fact, or a not-so-fun fact, about JLC, so the Joint Legislative Committee, which I serve on with school board, other school board members, and from their districts, representing their district Board of Directors, plus superintendents, plus USBAs, in just one second, I hope, did this come in an email or a text? I just thought, as the wrap-up of the session, I'm sorry, you should, I should have gone last. Give me two seconds, and I was going to print this off, but it, just, there was 575 bills that passed this last session, I have the details for higher ed and public ed bills, just a sec. Okay, I'm sorry, I hate, I hate taking time.
Do you want me to go for a minute, Robin, while you're finding your stuff?
Okay, actually found it, are you good?
Okay.
Okay, then we'll be done. So, this is just a fun, or not fun fact, but 139 law enforcement criminal justice bills, 136 education includes higher ed, public ed, and charters, this, this is what passed, 121 government operations, 111 health bills passed, 81 public education, only public ed, so we got in both categories, and there were 1,377 bills requested, 926 bills were filed, and 575 passed, so, just, they've been, they were busy in that 45-day period, and, and there's more about JLC, but anyway, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Tanya?
Well, the policy committee, we went over the salary lane and stipend changes, and I really appreciated all the work that Ms. Stilin did on that, I think there was a lot of communication with the teachers, and a lot of cooperation, and, and working together, and I think we came up with something a lot better than what we had before, and I was really happy with the compromises, and the, I guess brainstorming, coming up with a better way of, I just was really impressed, I think it'll be a really good, hopefully everybody can be a lot happier with it, and will be a good thing. And then, I'll let you talk about the facilities committee, if you have anything on that.
There's not a ton on facilities, the superintendent's continuing to work on the agreement with USU, and so, if he wants to comment on that, I'll let him, that's still a work in progress. I'm also on the finance committee, and Todd's stranded in an airport somewhere, so he can't be here with us tonight, the poor guy, he's in Kosovo.
Costa Rica.
Costa Rica, the poor guy, they, I hope he got his nose burnt. Anyway, they, on finances, we're going to go into detail a little bit later in our business meeting on finances, and maybe some brainstorming on how we want to work the CEC building. With that, I think that about catches, catches us up-to-date. Superintendent, anything you want to add on your end of things?
Yeah, and some of this will be new for the committee, we, so we've been working with Utah State University on the lease agreement, it did pass the Utah State University Board of Trustees, and on the 24th of, of this month, it'll go in front of the Commission of Higher Education, here in the state of Utah, to, it has to pass that commission as well, so that'll happen on the 24th, and just this morning, we put a pretty aggressive timeline in to get the RFP out, and to, and that's just for the, for the, the general, for the construction management, the CMGMC, I said that wrong.
CMGC.
CMGC, thank you, GMC's a car, yeah, all right, or a truck, anyway, so we're, we're going to get that out to bid, and, and then that, once, once we have that, they will be able to, to, to give us all of the information we need, in order for the board to consider the, the budget, so really, the, the step that'll happen for the board is in, in April, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but at the April board meeting, and, and that's the first week in April, because of spring break, we, that, that meeting gets bumped up, but during that April meeting, we'll, we'll ask the board to approve the RFP, so, so we'll actually have the, the construction management company in place, and, and really, that approval gets us kicked off, if the board's going to do that, it's kicking off the preschool project, and the next step would just be to, to work with them, and our architects, to pin down a budget, and then move forward in, in getting the budget in place for that project. So, so we're in a good spot now, we, we have, I mean, really, the two approvals, right, the higher ed commission, and this board, and then we'll be able to, to really get, get things moving, which is good. Any questions from the board about the preschool project? Oh, we have also the town hall meetings that we've, we've gotten, we've, we've scheduled those today, so, I'm going off of memory, but I think it's, is it Monday, the 27th?
Monday, the 27th.
So, Monday, the 27th, we're going to do five o'clock at Naples Elementary, and seven o'clock at Mazer Elementary, so we'll do two meetings, kind of opposite ends of the valley there, and, and invite whoever is interested, or would like to come, and, and listen to the architects, they'll, they'll give them a presentation, they'll show the, the drawings, and present the, the estimated budget on the projects, and then we'll, we'll be there to answer any questions that community members might have, and certainly, board members are invited to be there, it won't be in a board meeting, there'll be no business, but you're welcome to come and, and, and listen, hear what people have to say, I think it would be good to have you there.
Monday, the 27th, five in Mazer, and seven at Naples?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to go about an hour and 15 minutes at Naples, grab our stuff, rush on over to Mazer, set up, and, and.
Is Naples first?
Yeah, Naples, did I say Mazer? Yeah, Naples first, then Mazer, and, and that way our architects can make one trip down, and it's just a little more efficient for, for everybody.
Just a comment, board members, just so that you're aware of, I had an opportunity to read the rough draft, there is a lease that comes with that property, for the ground, and the trade for that lease is the room that they, that we will provide for them in the building.
There's several offices? There's four, there's four offices, and there's a, some, some shared space, there's an adult learning center, and that adult learning center, they will be the primary, so, essentially, they schedule it, and if we're going to use it, we're going to work around their schedule, and then there's other parts of the building where we'll schedule it, and they'll work around our schedule as part of the agreement, but yes, it's, it's that square footage that we're essentially, if you think of it this way, we're going to be, we're going to be renting that square footage out to them over the life of the lease, and that's going to cover the lease payment, so it's a pretty, pretty, pretty good deal, it's a win-win for, for both us and Utah State University.
Any other comment, or things on committee reports before we move on? Turn your mic, turn your mic on, Robin, will you?
USBA legislative update is coming, too, on the 15th.
Okay, item number two of the work sessions, policy revisions, policies, we have three for approval on the first reading, and we'll turn the time over to Superintendent Woodford for the first one.
Yeah, so the first one is, it's policy 001.0140, which is relations with parent organizations, we, we took that to policy committee, and policy committee, the input that we received is that we wanted to get more public input, and staff input on that policy, so I think it's going to go to some community council meetings, Ms. Stilin, is that correct? And we'll actually table the first reading today, and bring it back next month for first reading. Anything else, Ms. Stilin, on that one?
Turn, turn your mic on, Dr. Lee, please.
Mine's the next one, too, so, yeah, so, the policy deals with parent-teacher organizations, PTOs and PTAs, and those are being handled differently at different elementary schools, so we felt like we needed to gather some information about how those are currently being utilized, so that we can have the policy match more closely the actual practice that's happening, so, yeah, we'll table that and bring it back. It's going to go to Breakfast Club, which is the meeting where all of our elementary principals are, so, for discussion.
Okay, board members, so what that means, in the business meeting, if I have this right, Superintendent, under policies, number one, will not be part of the consent calendar.
That, that's correct, and, and I did on board docs, I did make note that we'll table that, so on, it's on, it's been corrected on board docs.
Okay, with that, policy 005.0650, holidays, that's also first reading, and Dr. Ms. Stilin Lee will take us through that one.
So, the reason we're looking at this policy is because in 2022, in the last legislative session, they passed a bill recognizing June 19th as a state holiday, and so, the policy change would bring us into alignment with this bill. What this means is, is that our, it impacts our 250-day employees, who are on a 250, or a year-round contract, and we do have a handful of employees who are, actually two employees who are on a 220-day contract, so, the plan is, once this policy is approved, that we'll look specifically at those two employees that are on a 220, and just deal with their contracts individually, to, to align with this. But for our year-round employees, in order to give them June 19th off, we are proposing that we trade that with a different day that they currently have off, that's not a state holiday. So, the way that it's being presented on first reading, you'll notice, is that we have traditionally given two days at New Year's, so we traditionally have given New Year's Eve and New Year's Day as days off, so we're proposing that we, we change that to just New Year's Day, which is a recognized state holiday, and add June, Juneteenth in as the, that holiday in. So, employees that are, year-round employees, would essentially still be, it would not change their pay, nor would it change the number of days that they work. Questions? It, it can be a little bit confusing, it took Jason and I a while to wrap our heads around it. The other option, right, that we discussed in policy committee, is just giving the June 19th, right, which would essentially be getting one less day of work out of our year-round employees, does that make sense?
And Ms. Stilin, clarify, you're talking about paid vacation day, correct?
Well, it wouldn't change their pay.
I mean, I meant, yeah, but I mean, it's not just off, it's.
That's, that's correct.
Yes.
Paid vacation, it's day off, but you're still getting paid for.
Right, they're still getting paid, yes.
Yeah.
So if we just added it, and didn't do that trade that we're proposing.
And one more day.
Then they would work one less day, but, yeah. Just also remember, our year-round employees do get vacation days, so, I mean, I've only been a year-round employee for one year, but those vacation days just allow you to take what works with your family, so, for me, I have younger kids off, so I typically use those vacation days around the holidays when my kids are home, so, that's also a benefit that our year-round employees have, to help, so that they can do what works for them and their families.
Board members, do you have questions for Dr. Lee?
Just tell me, also, again, real quick, just, what are the vacation, so, PTO, so for employees that are 250, or 240 and above, what are their vacation days, what are their PTO days, right now, what do they have?
So we get, I mean, we do have the option of donating a PTO to the sick leave bank, remember, right, but we get, Shauna can correct me, too, because she's the benefit guru, so we get 10 paid vacation days, and we can only carry over 80 hours of vacation days. Now, PTO, we get 10 PTO days, and those you can carry over unlimited.
Okay. We talked about this quite a bit, but I think this is great, we can take it back, since this is first reading.
It is first reading.
We can take it back, we can talk about it more, get more input, if we need to, but.
So remember, after you prove it on first reading tonight, then we'll circulate it out to all the employees, and, and they can give feedback on it. Are we good?
I think it sounds like.
That's what you usually say, are we good?
Huh?
That's what you usually say. Are we good?
Are we good? Okay, thank you, Dr. Lee.
You're welcome.
Policy 007.0210, graduation regalia, Dr. Dean Wilson.
Hey, just call me Dean, thank you. This policy's pretty much straightforward, it is a requirement from Utah Code, that we allow for members of a tribe, or someone that could be enrolled as a tribal member, wear their regalia during our graduation ceremonies, so, this is what's presented before the board, it's something that administratively we support, happy to answer any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions?
No, this is just coming to us from state level, we've already been doing this, right?
Yes, yes, we've, we've fallen into line with this in the absence of a policy, but I think it is very fitting that we, provided the board approves this policy, move it forward at Eagleview, on the west side, so, I think this is a very good, good meeting to, to look at something like this.
In practice, this really won't change anything for us, we're, we're happy to support this, and it's a good thing.
I love seeing the regalia at graduation, it's beautiful.
I do, those expressions, I mean, and, and all, all the kids do their own thing, and I'd love to see their personalities and their expression on their cap, and, but the regalia is awesome.
Is that reference to my bald head?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any, everything okay? Everybody all right? Item number B, policies for approval on second reading, Dr. Dean, we're going to keep you, keep shooting on, you can read the numbers and tell them what it is.
You bet, number 007.0505, maximum participation costs, also known as our fee schedule, again, what's presented here goes through an annual process, where we basically work with our secondary schools to develop a list of anticipated fees, and I need, I need to point out, this is the maximum participation cost, so when you see some of these numbers that are rather large, don't let that scare you. I brought for the board tonight, just a couple of exemplars, and I really want to highlight Jason's team, Rodrigo is amazing, and really did some, some good work with me, to kind of give you a good idea of where the money goes, so to speak. If you look at the amount from a fundraiser, that say our drill team is provided, that's $1,086, from fees would be 928, so in that case, we're actually covering through fundraising the bulk or majority of the costs that are associated with that. If you look at wrestling, for instance, the amount that's passed on to the student from fundraising is $625, from fees, it's $125, so, we don't necessarily pass all of those costs on to the students, but we also count, can't consistently count on fundraising in perpetuity, so that's the reason why the maximum costs are presented there for you. I do want you to know that our district does a fantastic job in terms of fundraising, and making sure that we limit the burden to parents, as far as the fees that are passed on to them.
Everyone's saying, saying no, they're happy.
All right, well, we'll move on to, I think, the, the next one is mine as well, it's 006.0410, special education for students with disabilities, again, this, or, this particular policy was under last review in 1985, and if my memory serves me right, I was about 10 months old, so, we can definitely update our policy to be reflective of current practices. Our current practices are well in line with state and federal law, this policy just ensures that it's codified in our policy.
Any comments, questions? Robin, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was slick. Dr. Lee, policy 005.0525, qualifications for salary lane and stipend changer.
Okay, I said I'm going to give a whoop-whoop when this one passes tonight, because it's been a long time coming, right? All right, so, I, I apologize for not being here at the last board meeting, I was at recruiting fairs, but, so I was a little frustrated watching the screen, so I'm going to talk you through a few things, just so you have good information, and I have done a significant amount of research on lane change policies across the state of Utah, and put them in, put it in a spreadsheet, some comparisons, and I provided it to the policy committee, so the committee was able to, to look at that. That being said, there is a huge caution when we're comparing districts, because not all districts are created equal, we have different number of contract days, some districts have sick leave banks, some don't, the way we deal with PTO is different, so, in the end, we still need to have a policy that works best for our district's size, the kind of professional development we're getting, and is, considers other benefits that our employees are receiving, so, there's a lot of line-through in this policy, strike-throughs, and there's a lot of red, it's almost a new policy, but I'm just going to talk you through it, and through some of the, the things that have come up in relationship to this policy. So, you'll notice that 2.0 is a new section, and this is just to add some clarification, we have modified the deadline section, one of the major changes we made is right, under the current policy, our employees submit a lane change by March 1st, our, this change would have employees indicate on their letter of intent, which they fill out every January, whether they intend to apply for a lane change, that, they would just mark that box, they would fill out what their current lane is, and what lane change they're going to be applying for. Then they wouldn't have to provide the documentation and the actual application until the first Monday in June. Right now, we're making them submit it March 1st, so we already have a pool of pending applications right now, but they're still getting some professional development from now till the end of the year, so this makes better sense, as far as they can indicate that they're going to apply for one, but they don't have to actually submit the application and documentation until the school year is over.
Board members, that's important, because it allows us to adjust our budget for those requests, so that's, that's why, you know, we want to have that intent provided.
So then, in that same section, in section three, we've added some timelines for us, once we receive the application and documentation, within 45 calendar days, we would notify the applicants if their lane change has been approved, or if their lane change is pending. We never deny a lane change, so it just remains in pending status until we receive the documentation that's missing, okay? On 4.0.
Wait, Ms. Stilin.
Yes.
You just said 45 calendar days?
Yes.
And in our, wait, is it, is it in, sorry.
And 3.2.1.
Never mind.
Yes.
Fix that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that means by approximately July 15th, they would know whether they were, they had that, that salary change for the coming school year, or if we were missing anything, they would still have some time to get that to us, in order to have that, the change made for the coming year. 4.0, the copy you received, that title, we're proposing to amend that title to say college/ university or USB credit. There's a lot of confusion when it comes to USB credit and USB relicensure hours, so oftentimes, when you go to a state-hosted, or a state-sponsored training, they'll say, you can have eight relicensure hours, or you can pay us $15, and we'll give you one USB credit, okay? They don't always offer credit, it's based on the training, or the professional development, and the caliber of that training, okay? So, so sometimes, an employee will have the option of choosing which one they want. We treat USB credit, so if they opted to pay for that credit, we treat USB credit the same as we do college or university credit, so we need to put that distinction in that title, okay?
Dr. Lee, let me ask you while you're there, in 4.1, then, so, from the copy that we have, that wording's going to change right at the beginning?
No, that will stay the same, it's just the title, we'll add, or, USB on the end, but 4.1 will stay the same.
So 4.0, just the title will change?
Correct.
So when that motion's made, do we need to address that?
Prob, yeah.
Yeah, I would say with the.
So we can change it?
Can you say it again, how you?
College/ university or USB credit.
Yeah, and that, that was some feedback I just got, like at 1:00.
Yeah.
Talking about.
Robin and I talked about this today.
USB credit can be up to 15 hours for one, anyway, hours versus credit.
Yes.
I don't, I don't see it as being a problem, but when one of you make a motion, you need the wording, and Dr. Lee, she'll watch us to make sure we get it right?
I just think adding that in the title makes it clear that we deal with that, USB credit the same as we do college credit, okay?
Ms. Stilin, do, do you have this on Word available with you here tonight?
Yeah.
If, if you would rather, because we have some space between the, this meeting and the business meeting, she can just make those changes, and we'll reload it into board docs, and then it really wouldn't require any.
That would be okay, I just don't want an approver reading like it is, without.
It is, it is different from how we sent it out from our, or, coming out of our committee.
Will you do that for us, and then we won't have to do that?
Yep, I will.
Okay.
Although I don't know if it would hurt to note it for the public.
Won't hurt anything to note it.
In the title, yeah. Okay, so, 5.0, this addresses the relic. In the title, yeah. Okay, so 5.0, this addresses the relicensure hours. Okay? So we have 4.0 that addresses the credits, and then 5.0 is the relicensure hours. Okay? So those definitions have been added there in Section 5. Course documentation really hasn't changed. Now, 7.0, if you'll remember, there was a lot of concern about the use of a committee when it comes to lane change. I will share with you that there's only one other district that uses a committee in any way to do with lane change, and that they have every, any type of professional development has to be prior approved with this committee. That's how they use a committee. But no one uses a committee to approve a lane change. However, in our policy committee, we felt like there was still some concern of eliminating the committee completely, so we've revised it so that the committee will be used as an appeal committee. So if there is a disagreement, or we come to an impasse on something to do with a lane change, then a district employee could say, "I want to appeal this to the committee." And they're basically giving the committee permission to have access to their personal information. That's part of the concern with having a committee. So the committee would only be used in cases of an appeal. The committee would consist of two administrators or district office staff. One of those will be the administrator of the appealing teacher. So they can be in the room saying, "Yes, I've approved, I approved them to go to that." That is tied to their current assignment. And then the committee would also have three teachers appointed by the superintendent. One would be high school, one middle school, and one elementary. So that's what we're proposing as far as an adjustment for the committee.
Serve for the whole year on that committee. Do we have that?
We didn't say that they would serve for a certain amount of time, and that's...
I thought we talked about, Tanya, did we talk about that?
You did, but if you have the administrator...
We may never need them.
If you have their administrator, that would be different.
Right, that was...
But the other rotating...
I just, we would create a committee every time there was an appeal.
Oh, I thought we talked about it.
So I would suggest that's really administrative because we don't know what circumstances could arise to have. For me to have the flexibility, you know, whether it's I appoint one for a year, or someone goes on maternity leave, so I have to, you know, re... I like the way that it's written now. It gives us some flexibility.
Then you can see there, along with the appeal, that within 45 calendar days of the submitted appeal, the committee would meet and make a determination. So just a note about the exhibit, number one, this is really a procedural thing, and so that will become part of the actual application, which will be available to all the teachers all the time. Right? So that conversion chart is procedural and will be part of the application. What did I forget? Robin?
Just one other.
Questions?
Do you want to clarify? Because this was the other comment that I just got a few days ago too from a teacher. Just the 5.2.1, do you want to explain the cap on the 30?
Oh, okay.
That was what they were talking about.
Yes, yes. So we currently have a cap on district relicensure hours. Okay? There's no cap on USBE relicensure hours. They can go to as many state-sponsored events that are approved by their administrator to get hours. But the district-level professional development hours, there is a 30, a cap of 30 on those each year. We do carry those over. So if an employee were to get 45 this year, we only allow them to have 30 for this year, and they can carry 15 over for the following year. So they don't lose them, they just carry them over. And I gave the caution about comparing other districts, but there are a lot of districts that require at least half of a lane change to be college credits. Right? So they can only earn half from relicensure hours, but half of those have to be college credits. So having a cap is really pretty generous. There are some districts who don't allow any district-level professional development hours to be counted toward lane change because those are typically earned while you're on the clock. You're getting a salary, you're in a faculty meeting, or you're at a professional development day, when you're already, you know, you're already getting paid to be there. So that's why the cap. Also, just the philosophy behind lane changes is that those are awarded for earning degrees. We get steps every year for the experience that we're learning, you know, every year for the things that we're learning, for fine-tuning our craft, for going to professional development, for participating in our PLCs. We're getting a step every year for those years of experience. Right? So the philosophy is that lane changes really are, really were originally built for college-level advancement. So putting a cap and allowing 30 is actually pretty generous. Questions about that? We did discuss that in committee at length, so.
Yes?
Okay, so...
It's okay. This is the biggest one.
Are you on this coming around?
Yes, she is.
Just give me a bad time.
You want to talk about what we talked about today?
Yeah, do you want to do that?
I can talk about it.
Or we can do it during...
There's so many significant changes to this policy. I do think that we ought to review it one year from now, just to make sure that it's working for us. It wouldn't normally come up on a rotation for about five more years, but with so many changes coming with licensure and micro credentials and all those types of things, I do think that we review it in a year from now and just make sure that it's working well.
And it's so important to the employees. So the, you know, we want to make sure we have a really solid policy for them to make sure they're compensated what they earn.
Yeah. And there are, it's significantly different. I mean, we're making some big changes here, so it makes sense to review it again. It doesn't mean we would necessarily have to bring it to the board, but we would need just to review it in policy committee to make sure it's still working for us.
If you three are brave enough, we are.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board for Dr. Lees?
I'll just, Tanya, does that sound okay to bring it back?
Yeah.
I mean, in a year-ish. Check it out.
Denise, are you okay?
Yeah, I like that they're looking at it in a year again.
Thank you, Dr. Lees.
You're welcome.
Looks good. Okay, on to item number three, items requiring future board action, the minutes. And we'll turn that over to Jason. We have a lot of them, so he can go. We'll turn it over to Jason.
Okay. Thanks, President. So we have, as Dave said, a lot of minutes. We had a special board work session on January 30th, I believe. Could be off a day on that, but January 30th and then our February meetings. And so we did have a lot of, not a lot, but a few changes that we had to make that were requested by members of the board, and those were resent out with yellow highlights. And then what is on Board Docs, there is no highlights, but what was sent to the board through email detailed those changes, mostly just clarification. I guess, are there any questions or any changes that the board would like to make right now as well? Because we can certainly make those changes. Can I help to mention one other board, the board, the Capitol Board minutes that we had on the 22nd? So essentially, we did, time-wise, probably about three times, like three times what a normal month is. And so Shauna, I appreciate her work on that.
Yeah, there's January 30th, February 8th, both the work session and the business meeting, and February 22nd for a business meeting.
Yep.
So are the minutes that are on Board Docs, are they already updated?
They're updated, yes. That's what you would be looking to approve.
Robin, did you have a chance to check what you was looking at?
Yeah, I did.
Everything okay?
Yeah, it's great.
Denise?
Shauna for getting them.
Tanya? Shauna, thank you. We know that's a tremendous amount of work. And thanks, Jason, you also. But that's a tremendous amount of work to get all that down and get everything referenced the correct way, so we appreciate that.
Can I just look at a fun fact on the minutes? I didn't know this, but Shauna looked it up. When a motion fails, it's a motion lost. So anyway, just a fun fact. You'll see that in the, in the business meeting, February. Yeah, it's kind of fun.
Cool. Learn something every day, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Jason, I think we're ready to move on. Purchases over 50,000 and contracts over a year. So we do have a contract, no purchases over 50,000, but a contract that is over
a year. It's an MOU, it's an agreement with the county. And so it's an agreement for, so the title is Agreement for Use of Facilities and Resources During a Local Emergency or Disaster. The county reached out to the superintendent to let him know that they wanted to draft that agreement. He asked Dean Wilson and I to review it. We reviewed it, made our changes, and sent it back to the county. The county then took it to their open meeting. I forget the date, but anyway, it was their last open meeting, and they approved it. Now, what you have in front of you is the draft that we would just be looking for approval. I don't really see a lot of issues with this, and here's why. If we have a national, if we have a county disaster, we're going to be doing all of this anyway. If there's triage or different things. This is wonderful foresight. It's in place. It gives people marching orders and a document in the middle of a crisis to actually run through this. And it gives them the opportunity to come out and survey our property and make plans. So I didn't see any issues with it, but I would like to bring this to the board to see if there are any concerns that you guys see, as you guys have looked through it, or if you have any comments on it.
Board members? Yes, Robin?
Not a concern, just, you may not be able to answer this, Jason, just in the contract page two.
Yeah, let me pull it up.
Totally curiosity, not anything controversial or questioning anything, just but when it says that the county can conduct a survey of each of our sites under, in our facilities, like just, like when, like annually, or?
I would say that it just, it just gives them, I would say it just gives them the ability to prep, like plan any of our sites, so they can come out next week, survey Mazor Elementary, let's say, look and see where the areas that they would plan their setups. So it just gives them the ability to come onto our property, survey it, review it.
Like situationally, when the situation rises. Oh, okay. Before it happens, maybe. I was just...
Denise, any questions or comments? Tanya?
No, looks good.
I think it's a great thing, Jason, to have in place. In the middle of a disaster, it's hard to set policy.
Yeah, right. So, and I'd also like to thank the county for reaching out to us and getting this ball rolling, so, yep. On to the next, or, sorry, Dave?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, the next one. I want to read this because that's not it. All right. So the board, months ago, we asked for approval to join a class action lawsuit for vaping.
For what?
For vaping and targeting kids through vaping. That was the lawsuit. We have reached a settlement arrangement, and so I won't go into the details of the settlement. If you would like, we can enter into an executive session, a closed session, to really dive into the details, but my recommendation is that the board would approve the settlement. And any settlement resources would be unrestricted and allow us to use those as the board and administration would see fit in the response to the agreement. So, yeah. Any questions that I could answer in this meeting, I'm open to?
You okay? Thanks, Jason. We appreciate that. Informa, excuse me, informational items, sanctioning of girls lacrosse and other related issues. And I seen Les Hamilton, our athletic director, come in and mend a goal. Where'd he sit? Come on up, Les. We're ready.
Uh-oh, he brought backup.
I did. I brought backup. So first of all, thanks for having us, letting us come down and talk to you a little bit about sanctioning and girls lacrosse. We're really here, multifaceted reasonings, number one, just to talk about lacrosse. And in just a minute, I'm going to let Katie Colton, our girls lacrosse coach, talk to you. But the other parts are just maybe talk about a little bit what the future is to establish a district procedure and policy for sports that are moving into and out of sanctioning. We do have sports that move in and out. Debate, for example, we used to have a debate program. We no longer do. My push is to, we'd like to have a debate program back in the school, and that falls under my purview in the athletics department. And so as we have sports that are moving into, or possibly out of, our cheer team, for example, is out of sanctioning right now and would like to move back into sanctioning with the UHSAA, that we just have a procedure and policy in order to do that. Last year, we had two, we had girls wrestling two years ago that moved into sanctioning, but without really a procedure in place to do so. So we can talk about that. But our athletics department, our mission statement is to develop each student athlete academically, socially, and physically. And I'm passionate about that. And so in my opinion, in our athletics department, the more kids that are participating in extracurricular, the better off our school and communities are because we're developing them academically, we're developing them socially, and we're developing them physically. And so we'd like to talk just a few minutes today about girls lacrosse. As of right now, girls lacrosse has been a club sport for two years within our school. Coach has done a great job of developing a program. She's going to take just a few minutes and brag about her program that she's developed at our high school, and then I'm going to take just a couple more minutes to finish up. So, Coach, come on up.
Okay. Hi, I'm Katie Colton. I'm the coach. I'm also a teacher at the high school, okay? I teach US government and criminal law. I want to tell you a little bit about this program because it really has grown. And originally, it wasn't intended to be this big, huge program that it's become, but it's really kind of grown. We currently have 35 students that are involved in this club. They come daily to practice five times a week, or five times a day, sorry, or, yeah, five times a week. The team is a very interesting mix of players. I have a lot of girls who have never played a sport at the high school. There's only three who currently play other sports, fall sports, and then two who participate in band. So it's a lot of very new players to this whole program. I like to think that lacrosse has also increased the engagement at the high school because it makes them feel like they're a part of something. Many of my lacrosse players, and if you talk to the administration, they like to joke about this, they were kind of on the fringes. They're a little rougher, but they are really good girls, and they have really become and grown into really good students. And before, they weren't. They were on the fringes of our school, and they were in a lot of trouble in a lot of different ways. There are a total of 56 different lacrosse, girls lacrosse teams in Utah, high school girls lacrosse teams. If our students went to like Wasatch High right now, they could play because it's sanctioned. It is sanctioned in all schools, high schools in Utah, and all high schools in Colorado, which is where the problem comes for us because... which is where the problem comes for us, because we can't play those teams. Under UHSA rules, we are not allowed to play them. Which means that we play each other, which is not great for team bonding, okay? Anyone, lacrosse is one of those great sports, because anyone can really play lacrosse. There's not a body type that you have to have, or a size, and you can get really good at it very quickly. For example, Bear River was only sanctioned three years ago, so a year after all the other high school teams were, and they just took state last year. So it is a very quick-moving, quick-learning sport. Additionally, many of the players on my team were previously on academic probation or difficulties. Quite a few of them were on track to graduation. They are now on track. We require them, we stay on them as coaches, and they are now there and increasing their academic success. And lastly, I want to tell you a little bit more about the team. I have a very diverse team. The student athletes come from various socioeconomic backgrounds and ethnic backgrounds. They have pulled together and created this safe environment that you don't always see in high schools for each other. Some of my players, actually, they really wanted to come and talk with you guys, and then they found out it was a closed meeting and they couldn't. They emailed you and sent you guys emails about why they felt lacrosse was important to them and why they would ask you to sanction it. And I asked that you look at some of those emails and get their personal stories, because a lot of them are very personal and very, I just, heart-wrenching in a way. So, I, I hope, and I want to thank you for your time to, listening for us today, and I hope that you're able to see how this is important to the students at our school. Thank you.
Denise wants to ask you a question before you run off.
Sorry, when is your season, like, when?
It's the spring season.
Spring, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So this morning, I went down to the counseling center, I just wanted to check on a few things, but in my opinion, one of the main, I, my opinion, the, the biggest struggle that we face at Juana High School, honestly, is the number of kids that leave our school. As of today, we've had over 400 kids leave our school, and half of those are freshmen and sophomores that have left, either go to the AVEC, or dropped out, or, and I know that for a lot of those kids, that is the best option, but there's also a lot of those kids that are lost, and participation in extracurricular activity will keep them in our school. We know that when kids participate in athletics, in extracurricular, they have higher GPAs, they have better attendance. We have fewer problems socially with them, and that's, that's where our motto, our, our, our mission statement comes in. Develop them athletically, socially, and physically, comes into play. So, the more kids, we have 750 of our kids that participate in extracurricular activities. Those 400, though, that are leaving our school or not, and to me, that is a major issue in, in our community, right? As those kids move forward in life, having not completed high school, or not having opportunities in high school, we can get a few of them into the fold by allowing them to participate. Girls lacrosse is a great example. There's only five total of those girls that are participating in any other sports. And so that's a unique socioeconomic and diverse group of young ladies that are participating in that sport. So, as we, as you guys think about this and moving forward, as we talk about debate in the future, and boys volleyball, and boys lacrosse, and other sports that are sanctioned throughout the state that we don't have at the moment, I just want you to think about the opportunity and how that improves our school and our community. The more kids that participate, the better off our school and communities are. As far as cost goes, my basic cost analysis for this would be a head, one head coach and one assistant coach stipend, which is roughly $8,000. They would get on the uniform rotation, which startup would probably be about $10,000, and then it's a rotating uniform, and I can't imagine that being more than $2,500 every four years. And then transportation costs. I wasn't able to get a real specific idea for transportation, it's different per sport, number would be basically one bus, and I think they're allowed 20 some games and half of, six, and tournaments, so there would be transportation cost. I can dive more into that and get a more fixed transportation cost for you if you'd like to, and report back to you in that. But again, just in closing, the more kids that we have participating, the better our overall GPA goes, our attendance, our test scores. We know that kids that are involved in extracurricular do better in school and become better and more fulfilling members of society as a whole and in our community. So, that would be our hope, that you take that into account as you debate what we want to do with girls lacrosse. My vote is to get them on board. They're already doing a great job, coach is doing a great job, and let them officially represent our school within, in the state and with the UHSA. Thanks.
Well, yeah, don't run off for a second. Did somebody say, Denise?
I have questions, and I don't know who can answer.
Come on up.
How do you recruit your players? Like, what have you done in the past to recruit them?
We do flyers, we have them invite their friends, we, we're going, our plan is to also hold a clinic this year as well to encourage eighth graders coming in, but, just word of mouth right now, and that's why, how fast it's grown still.
And do you have a varsity JV, like, how many girls are on the field?
So 12 players play at a time, so you only need 15 to field the team, so I have more than two teams.
Perfect.
And, and just so you know too, for the last two years, they've fundraised to cover their own, they use our transportation facilities as required for club policy, and so they've fundraised to cover their own transportation costs, their own uniforms, everything, so they're already a standalone, you know, self-sufficient program.
I got another question. You said, like, 16 games a year, or whatever, is half of them here, half of them there?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how they usually do it.
Awesome. I think that was it.
I don't know, is anybody else? I've been talking a lot today.
I'll ask my question, yeah, I've got some questions, but go ahead, and-
Go ahead, I'll, I'll ask my.
First of all, Les, I'm sure as a board that will support anything that we can afford to, to pay for. It sounds like a, a great program, but transportation is definitely something that we need to get a handle on, so that we know exactly where we're going, and thank you for all of your hard work. And it especially excites me that we're involving kids that, there's kids involved in the club that's not in other sports, so it gives them a tie and something to come for. Now, Les, where does that land us with Title IX?
Okay, so, great question. So Title IX, I, you're familiar with it, was to even the playing field, per se, for boys and girls. As far as Title IX goes, what Title IX looks at is the overall opportunity to participate. It's not specific as to number of programs. Actually, right now, we are female-heavy in our number of programs, but we're about even in total number of athletes on both sides, because football generally has over 100. So, this would, as far as Title IX goes, it keeps us in full compliance with Title IX, and it, our numbers, it's not going to affect, because football still keeps boys slightly higher as overall number of participants compared to girls' sports, so.
So your answer is, where I'm going with this, if we approve girls lacrosse, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to be able to afford boys volleyball or something at this time, too?
No.
We're okay?
We're okay.
Robin, your turn.
Sure. So, Les, I don't know if you have this data, but I just want to know, you said 750 participants in extracurricular, or now they call it interscholastic? It always reminds me of inter-
That would be just sanctioned.
Inter-galaxy?
Yeah, so that's just sanctioned.
So how many of those are, have, do you have the data? How many are repeat, or multiple athletes?
That's 750 total, that doesn't include repeats. I gave that in from, Dean, you have that information, didn't I send that to you?
That's not multiple athlete sports.
That's not, so we sent that information. Yes.
I just, I was just curious.
But we have 750 total participants, those are individual participants, that's not repeats.
And then includes non-athletics, or just?
That's just, you, that, okay, so, I would say extracurricular under UHSA, which includes band, it includes debate, it includes, although we don't have one now, it also includes choir, so they fall under our purview.
Theater, too.
As UHSA.
And theater as well.
They don't compete, they're non-sanctioned right now.
They're an activity, right?
So they're an act, that does not include theater, because it doesn't fall, because they don't compete with the UHSA, they don't fall under my-
They do compete.
So maybe I'm wrong on that.
They do. Anyway, I'm, I don't care about that, but I was just asking about-
I think they've been back and forth then, is my understanding, as to what they've quote-unquote competed in, because as far as if it's been UHSA sanctioned or not.
Okay, so, so the Title IX thing, there's three prongs, and as long as we meet one of them, so we already do that. There, there's also other options I don't think we've looked into, because if you just meet one from Utah High School, which is you survey students and see what they want to, they want to get involved in, if they, if we do that, do we, are we surveying? Because if we did that, we would meet the Title IX requirement as well.
We are surveying.
And then, then you can document the history of trying to add girls' sports as well, that's another prong. But, so, I just want to talk about, just procedure, because isn't this a school-level decision? Like, you can call Utah High School, as long as you have your admin, and then obviously our approval, but isn't that process, you just, you call Utah High School, whoever the director is over your sport?
So it's actually a very simple process. You pay the fee to be sanctioned under UHSA, and it's a, it's a nominal fee, and then you're, you are covered for catastrophic insurance and et cetera, et cetera, just like any of the other sports. I do feel, though, because of the financial obligation, okay, so here's the deal. If we sanction a sport, the school and the school district is now required to provide the equipment necessary for them to participate. Now, it might not be that big of a deal for girls lacrosse, but when boys lacrosse comes around in a few more years, we're looking, I've done the math, because at other schools, we're looking $100,000 startup, because you're looking at helmets, you're looking at shoulder pads, you're looking at, so it's a little, it's much, much more. So, the reason why I wanted to come to the board is, it'd be, in my opinion, because of the financial obligation of the school district, when we sanction a sport with the UHSA, I, I believe that there should be a board approval for that to cover the financial expectation for these new emerging sports and/or programs that might move in and out of sanctioning. For example, cheer, the last two years, has not been sanctioned and competitive, they were before, are not now. Will move back into sanctioning next year.
They could have this year, they could have this year.
They just missed the deadlines.
Yes.
If they wanted to.
Yeah, so, let me comment real quick. So, once, once the board, the way I see this, once the board authorizes a program, right, and authorizes the budget for that program, they can move in and out of sanctioning without board authorization or approval, but we're talking about really creating a new, a new program here that we're gonna fully fund and support as a district. And so, on its initial sanctioning or initial creation of a sport that we're going to fund, it has to have board approval, because this is a board-community issue. This is not a Les Hamilton, "I like lacrosse, so we're gonna, we're gonna start lacrosse." Or Rick Woodford, right? "I, I want boys volleyball, so we're gonna go for it." No, there, there's a, there's a commitment, a financial obligation, and it is a board-community decision. Do, do we value it enough to, to pay for it, right? So that, that's, that's why we're here, and I agree with Les, we, we need to have a policy that addresses this. But until we do, we're gonna come to the board.
Well, if we didn't, and then didn't approve your travel budget, we've just created a mess. So in my opinion, you're going about it, the only way that we, that we can is that we, we have, if, by approving it, we're, we're saying that we're going to fund this sport within a reasonable amount of, with taxpayer money. So, without, without that, if, then if we said, "Well, yeah, go ahead and get sanctioned, but we're not buying helmets, and we're not buying uniforms, and we're not funding your travel," what have we done besides chop your legs off? So, yeah, I agree, I agree with that procedure.
So as part of that, and because there really wasn't a procedure or policy in place in the athletics department, we kind of talked about it and decided that in order to become sanctioned, that we'd like to see a two-year probationary period, that they can stand on their own two feet, prove that they can get enough players, prove that they can have a stable coaching staff, and they've fulfilled that part of it, the two-year probationary period. So, they are signed up to be a, a club again next year, I recommended that she does that for, no. They're, they're a club this year, but she's also signed up to be a club next year, just in case, because they're gonna continue to move forward, but we'd prefer to see them sanctioned and backed and, and become, because it's-
Why wait?
Yes.
Why wait? I mean, if they've already, I mean, they've been 21, 22, and now you're 23, you're still a club status. I'm just, I'm just giving you one, why not? Because 4A, 5A, I just got on, on the website, 4A, 5A, 6A, so we're gonna be 4A next year, you'll, I mean, why, why wait?
Money.
Yeah, we need to approve this.
Okay, but we're gonna, are we talking approving it in April? Is that what we're talking about?
For next, that would be for-
Yeah, we'd be talking about putting it into the budget, for sure. That's, that's part of this discussion.
I just, we haven't heard anything about it, and then I got emails, and I just was wondering what's going on.
That's why they're here, it's informational, the board will vote on it next month.
Okay, we'll vote on it next month.
No, in two months. Well, maybe you vote on-
They'll, they'll board on sanctioning next month.
It wouldn't be possible to sanction it for this spring season anyways?
No.
They've already set their calendars.
Right, you have to do it, right.
I have a question on your cost on equipment, is that included in your uniforms?
So, your, cost of your equipment, so the girls, it's a $40 stick, $25 goggles are the cheapest I've found, or you can sometimes get them used cheaper, a mouthguard and cleats, that's it.
But is that included in your uniforms?
I think it's on a separate one.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So, there, multiple sports, so for example, baseball, the, the program generally will buy five bats for the program, and then if kids don't want to use those, they, most all the kids buy their own, their own bat, cleats, et cetera, et cetera. So, in the uniform fee, what we've just put in there is the basic standard required uniform by the NFHS, National Federation of High School Sports.
Okay.
So, she'll buy a few sticks and have them through her program, have extra goggles, but most kids will purchase those on their own.
Okay.
Unlike boys, they don't wear helmets, it's non-contact. So they don't wear helmets, they don't hit each other like the boys do, so they don't have shoulder pads and helmets.
You sure about that?
Non-contact.
Non-contact, so they're-
Kind of like soccer, which has the most connections of any sport, right?
Yeah, exactly, so the, the equipment cost is minimal.
Coach, bring us some, two or three comments, bring us some figures. What's easier for a board to look at is, we're gonna need about X amount of dollars in equipment per year, or in a four-year recycle, or, I'm not telling you how, but, and transportation. I do want you to know that my board members are really good, I don't know, I think about seven or eight of the girls sent us emails. I read each one of them, I'm sure all the board members did. They was really short, they didn't tell us much, and to the point. Our board meetings, patron input, don't send me 15 of your girls to say the same thing, but they can sign up for patron input next month. You know, two or three, however many's got something different to say, we try to be really open and, and we encourage the students to, to have a say in this, in this process, so they know what's happening, you kind of understand what I'm saying. So, some of them can come and sign up on the clipboard, get their two minutes, three minutes, what is that, superintendent?
Yeah, they can go three minutes, but the, you might want to consider having your captains come. I think that would be appropriate, right, to speak for, on behalf of the team. And just to clarify, it's, this is not a closed meeting, they are, they are welcome.
Yes.
Here, so.
We want them here if they want to be here, and the whole team can come. Like I say, to take up, all these people here are, are working hard and working long hours to take up an hour's worth of time, and hear the same thing 25 times is kind of redundant, but team captains, whatever, yeah, yeah, we don't want thing, we don't feel, want people to feel like they're not welcome, or their voices, doesn't matter. Not promising you that something's going to happen, but we're all for things that's good for Juana School District. Board member, Robin?
I, I know I was kind of grilling you, but I just, I totally, Les, I love your vision. I totally, you're preaching to the choir, honestly, I want to tell you that, but keep looking at all those emerging sports, because there's one on there that doesn't even require, you can do it virtually, and it doesn't require-
E-team sports?
Yeah, I mean, and get those kids out of the basement and unit team, I mean, I, I think we have the equipment, I'm just, I'm just-
It's not sanctioned yet, though. It's not sanctioned yet, though, right?
It's gonna be an activity. It's emerging.
Yeah, so when it, when it is, I think that's, that's a good discussion.
Anyway, just, yeah, I'm just saying.
That's good. We'll look for advice.
I just wanted to put my two cents in.
E-team sports is awesome.
Had your ear that.
Yeah, they play video games.
Denise, anything else?
No, I love the feedback. I love.
Tanya?
I think they answered all the questions.
Dave, I did have one thing. Jason, yeah, just, just for clarification, field use and any complications with the field. I, I, so my understanding is that you would use the girls' soccer field, correct? Is that what you're using right now?
Not right now.
Yeah, not with the snow. Nobody's using it.
So, uh, most of the schools that have sanctioned lacrosse in the spring, they also have obviously boys' soccer, football, and track that are using, we're fortunate. We've got a nice grass field. And if weather's not right, we can work around, we can schedule the football field, soccer field, stadium use for lacrosse also. You can chalk the lines, you can paint the lines on there with non-permanent paints, tape the lines. There's multiple variations we can do to, because they, it is a unique field, no doubt.
So we have, in other words, we have the space to not conflict with our other sanctioned sports.
Do we have a freshman soccer team for boys right now or just two?
Standard is JV, and most teams don't, but a lot of the schools we compete against don't have freshmen in their schools. So a lot of our sports this next year, and especially moving into this new region, we're not going to see a whole lot of freshman sports individually. They'll be combined with a sophomore team. Sometimes in our girls' soccer team last year, they were able to fill enough ninth-grade games to put a small season together. That's been my recommendation to coaches. If we can put a small freshman team, uh, together and get enough games for it, we'll cover the transportation and everything for the ninth-grade team, just to increase the number of kids we're keeping on teams, et cetera. But that's getting difficult as more and more schools don't have freshmen in their schools, and we're not allowed to play against middle schools.
But the freshmen can play up. They can play.
They can play up on the sophomore.
Like they can play Duchesne's Marcy.
We can do things like that, so yes.
Or JV.
That's right. So we did with the freshman girls' soccer. We had a few games. It wasn't a full schedule, but I've encouraged all of our coaches, softball, volleyball, well, volleyball already has it, but all of them that don't get a lot of freshman competition to look for games for their kids.
Yeah, the more, more games they can play, the better, the more kids get to participate.
Jason, anything else?
You, she was gonna say something.
Oh, I just had a point of clarification. You were talking about equipment. Um, we've actually fundraised all of our equipment. We've already bought the goals. We've already got, um, extra sticks and everything. So the only extra cost that we would have is the transportation and then the uniforms.
And coaches' statistics.
And the coaches' statistics. That's true.
Superintendent?
They've been doing it free.
Coach, thank you very much, Les. Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thanks, guys.
Review of 2022-2023 School Trust Lands. Jaime Leba, our curriculum director, will take us through that.
Good evening. So there are over a million reasons why Trust Lands is important for us, right, Jase? It's not decimal dust. Um, the Trust Lands is important, really, it funds, it funds many personnel. A lot of our schools, we have over a million dollars in Trust Lands that were received last year and this year. And, I mean, just the high school alone, almost three hundred thousand dollars in Trust Lands funds, okay? So it is an important budget. Um, there are a hundred and thirty-two pages in the, in the attachment that I sent you. I, I trust that you've read through all a hundred and thirty-two. Robin?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm gonna paraphrase for you. How's that? So when I review the plans, and these are not reviews of, and it says in the agenda, twenty-two, twenty-three plans, they're, they're a review from last year, last year's plans, okay? So when I review the plans, um, I look for four things. I look to see if the spending is aligned. Because every May, remember, you'll have plans in front of you and you'll approve those. And the plans, if they're ever modified, they have to come back to the board to get modified. So I look to see, did you spend your money where you said you were going to spend your money, okay? Two is, um, I look at the goal setting. Uh, did we reach our goals, okay? Uh, number three is, I look at the carryover. We don't want to carry, carry over, uh, more than ten percent of the funding. There's reasons for that. Uh, this money is, um, well, money's valuable, but the Trust Lands money is very valuable. If we're, if we are carrying over more than ten percent, um, sometimes it sends a message that, ah, you may not need it. So we really guide the principals to, to spend their funds. There was a, there was a COVID carry, uh, hangover, uh, which no longer is valid moving forward, okay? And, and many, uh, we were sometimes not able to spend the funds due to COVID, uh, but we're out of, we're out of that area now. And then, uh, really, there's only three things I look for: the spending, the goal setting, and, um, and do we have any carryover? And for the most part, what we did find in the goal setting, and the goal setting's kind of tough because we expect principals to set some, some rigorous goals, right? Wildly important sometimes, and a lot of times they're not going to reach their goals. But I think sometimes we're setting goals, uh, I think we can probably do a better job of setting, of goal setting that are more realistic. And, uh, as the principals will begin their new plans for this, for next year, we'll provide some guidance on when you set your goals, set the goals that you can really hit those targets. Uh, that's what I found across the, the district. Uh, we didn't meet many of our goals. And I think part of it was just they were, they were pretty rigorous, so. There's my report to you. Any of any specific questions from Trust Lands?
I have one question, Jaime. Any money that we had, and, and I don't care what that is, but if our grace period's gone for our holdover money, has that money been taken care of?
You mean by Trust Lands? So the carryover? Uh, the carryover would actually go back to the school.
But we had a grace period for COVID, right, where we could, we could hold a little bit more than typically?
Right.
Or we did, felt like we could?
And many times it was more than ten percent. It could have been twenty or twenty-five percent. I don't have those numbers in front of me. Uh, now, if a school is planning, moving forward to say, "Look, um, I want to capture some money this year because I want to save it for next year," that's okay. Uh, and many times that will happen. But, uh, we're, we're through the holdover, if you will, yes.
This is just for clarity. I don't understand. So the three columns, you have planned expenditures, amended expenditures, and actual expenditures. Um, could you explain those a little bit? I think I have a disconnect somehow.
So on, on the actual budgets?
So what's planned? What does that mean?
So the planned expenditures would have been, um, what was currently in the plan. This is how they plan to spend their, their funding.
Originally as of like last year or next year?
As of, no, this is last year's plan. This is, this, these are from two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
And so actual is how they actually spent it?
This is actual, and then.
So, so I'm, my question is, like, every one of them, it's like their plan was to spend, say, three thousand dollars. They spent fifteen thousand. They're nowhere near. What, what am I missing?
Show me which one you're looking at.
Um, that one. Uh, that one's the point, but they're all the same. Let's see. I mean, they're all very different.
One of the, one, one thing that we found, so the first thing, when I went to Ruth N. Nelson, the secretary, I said, uh, there seems to be a disconnect between, um, the, the two columns, right? When she went downstairs to talk, there, there is a lag in the information from either our OLEO to the state. So these numbers aren't, aren't entirely accurate with, in terms of where the spending is, in terms of that third column. It's hard to explain, but the, the principals, when they pull their money, uh, there's a lag from where the state is. We, we have a process in place to make sure that there's any changes to their budgets. It goes through a process. They have to go back to their community council, and then that plan actually comes in front of you to, to amend, or to approve or to not approve. Typically, approve it.
I guess I'm, I'm just missing something, I feel like, but my understanding.
Let me pull the points.
So we have planned, and then we have amended. There's usually not anything in the amended, and then we come to a much higher number in what we actually spent. So we didn't approve it first?
Are you looking at, Tanya, are you looking to where it says the distribution for each school? Do you see that first?
So you're LaPointe, right?
Um, that, yeah, I can look at that one.
Okay, let me go to LaPointe.
Maybe I'm looking at remaining.
Okay, so sometimes, like, do you see the, is it the salaries and benefits where it had twenty-two thousand and then it was twelve thousand? Expended? Is that what you're talking about with LaPointe?
No, you know, I'm, I, that is what, no, I misunderstood something. I didn't see at the bottom remaining, remaining funds, carryover. Is the, I thought this was a total of the columns. Does that make sense? I was just glancing through.
Okay.
I misunderstood.
No, that's good. The, no, uh, and many times with salaries, it's not exact. I mean, they're making a good estimate on what they'll spend in salaries. Uh, that's where it can be a little tricky with how much they spend, but.
I just misunderstood what I was reading. I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Robin?
Sorry?
How did you know I was gonna? So, Jaime, when did, when do you get the, um, well, this is last year's data. So when do you, like, guys usually get the Acadians and the Ready Math and the RISE? When do you get that data from each, the end of?
If, like, you mean if they set their goals based on like Acadience goals?
Yeah.
End of the year, it's spring? Or like RISE would be spring? And so what they do is they, um, I can't remember principals, if it was a little later this year. Typically, these reports are, uh, they've had some website troubles, uh, Trust Lands, and so, um, the principals weren't able to enter the data right away. But it's last spring's data. That's what we, we base it off. Regardless if it's Ready Math or Acadience or RISE or ACT, it, it'll be a spring, spring data.
I'm just, I'm impressed that this, they spend their money mostly on salaries and benefits. I mean, they have to to make up, and so it's on people and it's on students. That's, the only one that wasn't was you on because they needed, um, they don't have. And then, um, I, my other question was, do you guys also, on the accountability piece, just like when there's huge decreases or, or increases too, but do you look at, um, I mean, looking at the ones that made their goals, I mean, you're looking at, like, what are you looking, are you looking at absenteeism, school, uh, class size? Are we doing any of that demographic? Is it just based on straight-up accountability piece from? I just want to, if they're making their goal or if they're not making their goals, or anything else involved, or it's just straight up?
Well, we have processes in place throughout the year that we're trying to monitor. We have, you know, we have data dives where we'll, we'll bring the, the, we'll have the principals present their information. So we're looking at data. Uh, this is old, this is.
Yeah, last year.
Uh, last year's. Uh, but we, we, uh, we try to view learning data more regularly than, than every nine months.
Yeah.
Okay? Is that, I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask you one later.
Okay.
Denise, any more questions?
I've kind of sat on the trust fund through community council, so, yeah. I don't have any questions.
Comments, Jason or Superintendent?
Thank you, Jaime. We appreciate you. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our work session. Um, I'd entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our Impact Aid meeting will start, um, will start right at five-thirty. Yeah, you found it before I did.
So, so we'll do dinner after the Impact Act.
Okay, yeah. No problem. I just forgot to ask you before the meeting started.
No, I meant to tell you, I meant to tell you before.
I grounded Jason yesterday. I thought he was going to seven, eight o'clock.
I was just, I was just calling to see how you were.
Good, how are you? Getting set up, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Are excited? Are excited, Chris?
I am excited. It's set.
I was trying to be like, so, can be so complicated.
I just found out about that today.
Name in his terms as much as possible. Yeah, that's good. You're good.